to upload that they too deserve the opportunity to return to jobs that they are qualified for. That's why I'm proud to announce that earlier today, the City Council passed the Worker Right Return to Work Ordinance. This ordinance features a number of key provisions and requirements that will create pathways for our hotel workers to get their jobs back and get back on the right track towards financial stability and security. Let me walk you through some of these provisions. First and foremost, this ordinance requires that as guests return and hotels increase staffing, hotels must offer employees their previous positions or other positions for which they were qualified before hiring any new workers. I am told by the hotels that they started that process some weeks ago, but this ensures that it absolutely happens and that the workers who were there have the right to return, and that's an important benefit for the workers in our city. Second, more than one worker is entitled to preference for a position. The hotel will offer the position to the worker with the greatest length of service at the hotel. That's only fair. You work the longest, you work the hardest, you get the first pick. Third, hotels must notify employees of recall opportunities through registered mail and via email or text to ensure that the best possible chance that workers who have relocated or had their phones disconnected are not overlooked. So we're doing a belts and suspenders approach to making sure that workers know that their job is waiting for them. And to help streamline this process, hotels can make simultaneous conditional offers of employment to multiple workers who have been laid off, workers who will then have five days to accept or decline. Fourth, hotel workers can seek enforcement of this ordinance through civil action after providing notice to their hotels and allowing 15 days for the hotel to address any alleged violation. What we want to do is make sure that if there's a problem, the hotels are on notice, they're given the opportunity to cure, and if they don't, then the workers have additional protections. And fifth, this ordinance will remain in effect until December 31st, 2023, giving our residents a fair amount of time to return to the positions that they earned before the pandemic ever struck our city. Now, I want to say for the, what I think that this ordinance has done is once again brought the workers and the employer together. That's how we must do things going forward. I really think that Alderman Garza in the Fair Work Week ordinance really set the standard that we have to abide by, which is bringing people together in public, not in behind closed doors, and making sure that every side has an opportunity to be heard. That's the right thing, the fair thing to do. I agree with Chairman Garza, and that's the way we will do business here in the city of Chicago, and this ordinance is another testament to that. I want to talk about, though, a little bit more about our hotels. Right now, overall, they're at about 40% occupancy. In normal times, at this moment, they would be at about 90% occupancy. So we're coming back. We weren't at 15% like we were a year ago, but we still have a long way to go. And I also want to say, there are hundreds of vacancies at the hotels. So if you had a job at the hotel and you want to come back, make sure that you let your hotel know that the jobs are available. But I want to also particularly put in a plug for junior and mid-level management. These are good-paying jobs, jobs that have a career path. Those jobs are also open. So if you believe you're qualified, check into the hotels and apply. But we want to bring our workers back. We want to make sure that people have opportunity for employment, and that's really what this ordinance is all about. The Hotel Worker Right to Return to Work Ordinance is an important and necessary step in our mission of ensuring workers' rights both during and well after our city's period of reopening, rebuilding, and recovering from the pandemic. It also builds on another measure that was taken in City Council today that addresses the challenges both businesses and workers are facing. I also want to announce that the City Council has also passed the majority of our Shy Biz Strong Initiative, which will significantly improve how businesses, how businesses are able to fare here in Chicago and what we do to support those businesses and their employees. The Shy Biz Strong Initiative is the most comprehensive legislative package our city has seen in years. And as a result of our businesses coming to us, asking for exactly what they need, and for us working diligently to deliver relief for them. The thing I heard over and over campaigning, the thing I've heard over and over as mayor, and particularly over this very difficult year for our small businesses, too much red tape, too many delays, too much bureaucracy, we need relief. And that's what we have done, and even with the peace that was held, we're going to continue fighting like hell for our businesses because they deserve it. We can't have an economy that fully reopens and have our businesses still suffering and laboring under bureaucracy and red tape that holds them back. The peace that was held, this is what it was about. A business wants to open, and it has a sign hanging over the sidewalk announcing that it's open for business. That's what this is about. Right now, under existing law and practices, it takes months, months, for that business to get approval. Every single city council meeting, literally pages and pages and pages of businesses that just want to get a sign to say that they're open for business. That makes no sense, folks, so we got to keep working and fighting for them. What we did pass today was an incredible win for our business community, as it will provide needed financial relief to thousands of businesses, cut red tape across numerous city processes, and deliver new protections for both workers and consumers. What Shy Biz Strong is about is supporting our businesses and giving them exactly what they told us they need to recover from this pandemic. And we're going to keep fighting to make sure that we deliver for them. So we will be back, and we will continue fighting for the passage of the public way portion of the Shy Biz Strong. Because the last thing we should do as a city is make it harder for businesses to thrive. Not in this time. We got to make it easier. We got to make sure that our small businesses, the hundreds, if not thousands, that have closed, the ones that yearn to open, that they have everything that they need and that the city is getting out of the way and giving them the support so that they can open and thrive. I want to thank all of our community, business, labor, and aldermanic partners for their invaluable support and collaboration on both the Hotel Worker Right to Return to Work Ordinance and the Shy Biz Strong Initiative. These two measures alone demonstrate just how necessary and beneficial it is when we come together to address the hardship our residents face. You've heard me say this many, many times, and I absolutely, 1,000%, believe it to be true. Our work, our work as elected officials, is to make sure that what we're doing reflects the lived experience of our residents, that what we do is listen with a humble heart and a listening ear, and then translate what we're hearing from our residents into policy that helps them. If we're not about that, then we're doing the wrong thing. And so today is a day to celebrate. We listened to the workers, and we provided them with protections. We listened to our businesses, particularly our small businesses, in a time of great need, and we provided them protections and support. But we're not done. More work to come. And with that, I'd like to bring to the podium a champion for the rights of hotel workers. Unite Here Local One President Karen Kent.
This is an awesome day. It really is. Yeah, good evening. I'm Karen Kent. I'm the president of Unite Here Local One, the Hospitality Workers Union. Thousands of women, thousands of Chicagoans have dedicated their careers to cleaning hotel rooms, preparing meals, serving coffee, and they've been welcoming guests to our city, making them feel as if they are in their own homes. And today is such a hopeful day for these women. Today, hotel workers who lost their jobs through no fault of their own can take comfort in knowing that when the guests come back to our city, they'll be able to come back to work. And today, many women will breathe a sigh of relief. The weight of the worry that so many women have carried for 15 months has been lifted. The Hotel Workers Right to Return to Work Ordinance, approved by City Council earlier today, will ensure that hotel workers who were laid off or fired due to the pandemic can return to their jobs as guests return to our city, and they will be returning to jobs they love. We don't expect the hospitality industry to recover immediately, and a recovery is going to take some time, but Chicago is a city with heart. And on behalf of our members, we are sending love to all of you who love our city and miss our city. And whenever you get here, whenever you return, we will have fresh room ready for you. Your tea will be iced or your coffee will be hot, whichever you prefer, and we will welcome you with open arms. Come back to our city. I am so very grateful for the best labor fed in the country, second to none, Chicago Federation of Labor, led by Bob Reiter. No one in our movement does it alone, and our labor movement has lifted our spirits and lent us a hand and never let us down. This year has shown that time and again, and today. So thank you to Labor, Andrea. There's a special sweetness to being here today. I don't know if any, well, I don't know if you thought of this, Mayor, but in March of 2020, 15 months ago, we were here at press conference. I was here at a press conference with Mayor Lightfoot. And as the city and the world were shutting down under the pandemic, Mayor Lightfoot made it possible for our union to settle the Cambria Hotel Strike, which at that time was 18 months long. And so under the growing shadow of the pandemic, there was a small group representing business and government and labor, and we worked swiftly to find a conclusion to that struggle. And George Jordan, president of Oxford Hotels, was representing the hotel's management, Jim Franzick, along with the city's legal team and our union's bargaining team. And we were focused on the greater good. And Mayor, you helped us, you brought that together, you know, in a brief window of opportunity that you, that Mayor Lightfoot opened for us. In March of 2020, the Cambria strike ended, and shortly after, the Cambria began providing guest rooms for vulnerable Chicagoans in need. For that small group, for our union and for Mayor, that effort was a bright ray of hope in a joyous moment in what was a very dark time. And now, 15 months later, we are here together, June of '21, and again, Mayor, we are on the other end of the pandemic as Chicago reopens. And we're here with you at a less dire time, less, but it's still an urgent time of need. And we are here to say thank you, thank you, thank you for bringing us another much-needed ray of hope for hospitality workers. Thank you. Although none of us planned it this way, the passage of this ordinance today is, and being here is, feels like kismet, you know? It's meant to be that we're sort of at the, you know, towards the end of the pandemic, and we were here at the beginning. It is a great first step out of the pandemic in, towards the equitable recovery that Chicago's hospitality workers deserve. And I'm so grateful for your leadership, Mayor Lightfoot, on this ordinance. On behalf of our members, on behalf of hotel workers, we thank you so much for your support of hotel workers and the Right to Return ordinance to the members of the City Council, Chair Garza, Alderman Lopez, every, every member who voted for it and people who supported, but most of all, you, Mayor Lightfoot. On behalf of our members, thank you. She's a poodle. Thank you so very much. Andrea.
Good evening. My name's Andrea Kluger, and I'm the Director of Legislation and Politics for the Chicago Federation of Labor. On behalf of President Bob Reiter and Secretary Treasurer Don Velar and the CFL's 300 affiliated local unions and their half a million members, I'm proud to be here today to celebrate the passage and enactment of the Hotel Worker Right to Return Ordinance. First, I want to congratulate Unite Here Local One President Karen Kent on this monumental achievement, as well as Mayor Lightfoot and her team, the Chicago City Council, and especially Chairwoman Sue Siedlowski-Garza, and the thousands of hotel workers who sacrificed so much over the past year. The Hotel Worker Right to Return Ordinance is simple. It requires that as hotels increase their staffing, they must offer to reinstate employees to their previous positions or other positions for which they are qualified before hiring other replacement workers. That means a fair shot for workers, like those who we're here with today, the ones most economically hurt by the pandemic, to give them a shot to return to their jobs and begin to heal the damage caused by this crisis. We're excited to see our city begin to reemerge from the past year. We have more tourists arriving every day, more patrons in our restaurants, more guests in our hotels, but we must ensure this recovery is equitable recovery, especially for those who bore the brunt of the economic pain. The Hotel Worker Right to Return Ordinance is a giant step toward fair recovery for thousands of workers. Many of these workers are women of color and older women who find it increasingly difficult to find work. This ordinance is critical for ensuring they are not left behind as our city springs back to life. This city cannot and will not turn its back on the workers who sacrificed everything during the pandemic. Everyone from every single neighborhood must be a part of this recovery. Together with the Shy Biz Strong Ordinance that passed today, the minimum wage increase that takes effect next week, and the Fair Work Week Ordinance, Chicago is taking significant steps to support its labor force, bolster its middle class, and ensure we remain the most pro-worker city in the nation. There is, of course, much work left to do. We are still at the beginning of a long road to recovery, and countless Chicagoans are still feeling the pain of the crisis. But today is a good day for thousands of workers in the hospitality industry, a day to celebrate as we rebuild a stronger, more resilient, more vibrant Chicago, and tomorrow the work continues. Thank you.
And now I'd like to welcome Erica Hernandez.
Mi nombre es Erica Hernandez. He trabajado durante 18 años en el hotel Four Seasons de Chicago. Empecé como lavaplatos, luego me convertí en cocinera, preparando y sirviendo comida para los empleados del hotel. Amaba a mis compañeros de trabajo y a mi trabajo. Nos sentíamos como una familia. Al principio de 2020 compré mi primera casa en Humble Park. Me sentí orgullosa y emocionada de haber logrado este sueño. Haces planes, crees que tienes algo de estabilidad. Nunca imaginé que me despedirían de mi trabajo. Me ha preocupado mucho cómo voy a pagar la hipoteca. Siento el peso del estrés todos los días. Mi trabajo en el hotel es todo lo que conozco desde hace casi dos décadas. Como mujer mayor es muy difícil encontrar un nuevo trabajo. Gracias a esta ordenanza sé que puedo volver a trabajar en el trabajo que amo. Me protegerá a mí y a muchas otras mujeres como yo. Gracias a alcaldesa Lori Lightfoot y a todos los que nos apoyaron.
My name is Erica Hernandez. I've worked for 18 years at the Four Seasons Hotel. I started as a dishwasher, then became a cook, preparing and serving food for the employees of the hotel. I loved my coworkers and my job. We were a family. In early 2020, I bought my first home in Humble Park. I felt so proud and excited to have achieved this dream. You make plans, and you think you have stability, but I never imagined I would be fired from my job. I have been so worried about how I will pay my mortgage, and I felt the weight of this stress every day. My job at the hotel is all I've known for two decades. As an older woman, it is very difficult to find a new job. Thanks to this ordinance, I know I can go back to work at the job I love. It will protect me and many other women like me. Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot, and everyone who supported us.
And now we welcome Kimmy Jordan.
Hello. As the mayor said, when these statements was prepared, it was good afternoon, I mean, it was good evening. My name is Kimmy Jordan. I have worked at the Housekeeping Department at a downtown Chicago hotel for 16 years. I am a Chicagoan, born and raised. I live in the back-of-the-yards neighborhood. I've seen a lot in my years, but I've never could imagine living through a pandemic like thousands of other Chicago hotel workers. I've been out of work for many months. The uncertainty and the stress of the pandemic has taken its toll. But today I am filled with hope. It feels wonderful to know that when my hotel reopens, I will go back to the job that I love. It is a high-quality job that allows me to take care of myself and be active, and be an active community, an active member of my community. I am so grateful to Mayor Lightfoot and everyone who supported this ordinance. I can't wait to go back to work and welcome the guests back to Chicago. I know that all of my brothers and sisters who pushed for this ordinance are excited to come back, excited to do the same. I am so proud of our city, and I'm excited to be proud of Chicago's comeback. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lightfoot.
Thank you.
I'm so happy.
Thank you.
Do you guys sign one of these?
Thank you.
You just tell me what to do.
Thank you, Ms. Lightfoot.
Can you guys sign that for me? I'd like to look at my office.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, we're going to begin Q and A shortly.
All right, two questions. Craig is first.
Hold on, let me, let me just say this. I think you feel, hopefully, what I feel in this room, which is an incredible sense of relief, joy, happiness. So what I want to remind everyone is when you go to those hotels, and I encourage you to do so, make sure you don't forget to say thank you to the workers. They are the ones that make it all possible. I also want to say thank you to Michael Jacobson of the Illinois Hotel and Lodging Association and his colleagues, who supported this compromise, worked hard to get here, and care deeply, I know, about the workers. You listen to some of the stories of these workers, and they've worked at these hotels for 10, 15, 20 years, in some instances, longer. You don't do that if you have an employer who doesn't care about you. So I also want to say thank you to the hotels. But this is a great day, great day for workers, great day for our city. We're back, we're open, and I want to make sure that we celebrate these moments. And we've had so few opportunities to celebrate over these last 15 months, but we have many more ahead of us. So with that, I'm happy to take your questions. We're starting back here, sir. Go ahead, Craig.
Hi, Mayor. Good evening. I wish it was good afternoon. What was it that convinced you to drop your opposition to renaming of Lake Shore Drive and go along with this compromise that we approved today?
Well, I was a part of making sure that the compromise happened. Compromise is a part of the democracy, and I'm glad that we were able to get it done. But I will also say, I agree with Alderman Riley on this point. This has been covered like the trial of the century. During this time that the council has spent on that issue of naming a road and signs, not one baby was fed, not one worker got a job. We have important priorities in this city, particularly as we come out of this pandemic. And I hope that we can get back to making sure that we're doing the business that our residents elected us to do and to take on the tough challenges and the priorities. I'm glad that we've moved beyond this moment, but I think it's a point of reflection for us to think about what's actually important. What do our residents want? What are their pain points? What should we be focused on to make sure that we're making their lives that much better?
We saw it playing out over Celia Mazzas being made commissioner, some rift between the Latino aldermen and the black aldermen. Are you concerned that this could be a real dividing point? Because there seemed to be some real acrimony in there with Jeanette Taylor and Alderman Cardenas and...
You know, that's not what I saw. Obviously, there are strong feelings about the situation with Ann-Jenette Young. I think we all remember and probably are never going to forget that video, which was horrific to watch, and her grief and her anguish and her trauma. But as I said in my remarks about Corporation Council Mazzas confirmation, lawyers are there to call balls and strikes. They're there to give advice to clients, their best judgment based upon the facts and the law. And that may not suit some people, they may not agree with the politics, but that's not what lawyers are about. Having been a practicing attorney myself for 30-plus years, having a range of clients in difficult situations, ones that are very emotionally wrought... We have important priorities in this city, particularly as we come out of this pandemic. And I hope that we can get back to making sure that we're doing the business that our residents elected us to do and to take on the tough challenges and the priorities. I'm glad that we've moved beyond this moment, but I think it's a point of reflection for us to think about what's actually important. What do our residents want? What are their pain points? What should we be focused on to make sure that we're making their lives that much better?
We saw it playing out over Celia Mayses being made commissioner, some rift between the Latino alderman and the black alderman. Are you concerned that this could be a real dividing point? Because there seemed to be some real acrimony in there with Jeanette Taylor and Alderman Cardenas and...
You know, that's not what I saw. Obviously, there are strong feelings about the situation with Ann-Jenette Young. I think we all remember and probably are never going to forget that video, which is horrific to watch, and her grief and her anguish and her trauma. But as I said in my remarks about Corporation Council Mayses confirmation, lawyers are there to call balls and strikes. They're there to give advice to clients, their best judgment based upon the facts and the law. And that may not suit some people. They may not agree with the politics, but that's not what lawyers are about. Having been a practicing attorney myself for 30-plus years, having a range of clients in difficult situations, ones that are very emotionally wrought, you've got to play it straight and deliver balls and strikes and the best advice. The client then has to make the determination on a range of different factors. But if a lawyer is cutting corners and not playing it straight and worrying about the politics of something and not with the facts and the law of demand, then all is lost. As lawyers, we are officers of the court. We have a higher calling, if you will, and responsibility and ethical standards that we have to meet. And I'm 1,000% confident, having known her for 25-plus years, that that's exactly who Celia Mayses is. She is the embodiment of integrity. And I am honored that she's agreed to step up and serve. But I didn't see, I didn't understand the circumstances that rose up on Wednesday and then permeated a little bit today as a black and brown conflict. I don't, I didn't share, I don't share your interpretation of that.
Can I just follow up? Jeanette Taylor wants an apology from you over what happened on Wednesday. Have you talked to her or will you apologize to her?
I, Jeanette Taylor and I talk all the time. And I will just say what disappoints me about what happened was I saw her twice over the weekend, had stuff into comments with her, and this was after Ms. Young and her attorney's press conference, and the issue was never raised. And she contacts me on a range of issues. Obviously, this is something that she could have contacted me about. But let me just say this again, we're not going to litigate that case in the press. It's not appropriate, ever, and it's not appropriate in this instance. But let me just say, as I think Mara Georges said well today, you can't settle a case with somebody who doesn't want to settle. And we went to a mediation paid for by the city in good faith, and her attorney walked away. So when the other side walks away, particularly at the beginning of the litigation, what are you to do? You have to carry on. I'm confident that at some point, this case will be resolved, and we owe it to Ms. Young, we owe it to our taxpayers, we owe it to the city to get this better resolved. It's not a case that should linger on for years and years. But when the lawyer walks away, there's nothing much to do. Now, I know he said he denies that, but there's a record, and a record will speak for itself. He walked away.
Hi, Mayor. Happy Pride. I was wondering if you could comment at all? I've heard from businesses in Hyde Park who are telling me that the midnight end of liquor sales is going to hurt their bottom line. I spoke to Alderman King, who said that perhaps the BACP could approach this on an individual basis with particular businesses ending liquor sales at earlier or later times in the city. Is there any other room for legislation on this in the city of Chicago at this point?
We had extensive conversations about that very issue. And there were, I think, a lot of opinions on what the right time should be. There are many aldermen who are very concerned about quality of life issues, that some of these liquor, packaged liquor stores are not good actors when it comes to making sure that people don't linger and loiter, that they are respectful of their neighbors. And so this was the thing that was debated at length, as Commissioner Escareno can attest, and a lot of discussion, a lot of conversation about it. And we got to a place where the council voted for a 12:00 p.m. time. And I think that that's probably a good compromise.
And I'm sorry to beat a dead horse, but do you have any plans to meet with Alderman Taylor subsequent to the incident that's happened Wednesday? You said you haven't spoken to her since, and do you have any comment about what happened?
So you are beating a dead horse.
I said I apologized for it.
But with respect to your question, I am open to talking with any member of the body.
Mayor Lightfoot, what I think...
Can you introduce yourself, sir?
Yes.
I don't think I'm familiar with you.
William Kelly, I'm with Newsmax. What I think everybody knows, but you didn't mention, I don't think any of your speakers here today mentioned it, is the reason why the hotels are empty, the reason why the storefronts are closed, is because of fear of violent crime. There was, well, if I may ask my question, it's a simple question. There's a woman, a pregnant woman was shot at a hotel across the street from here last week at 4:00 in the afternoon. You know, of course, we have this horrific Juneteenth, 50-some shooting, 50-some shootings, a young Hispanic couple pulled from their car and shot execution-style. This video has gone viral. I don't think we've had any arrests in this case yet. A tourist came to Chicago and was stabbed in the back and murdered on Juneteenth here in the city of Chicago. Our police chief referred to the location of the stabbing as a homeless camp. Last time, I was born and raised in Chicago, I always considered it to be the financial district of Chicago, not a homeless camp.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yeah. So my question is, do you feel personally responsible for the, your rhetoric, your heated rhetoric is responsible for this off-the-charts violent crime in the city of Chicago?
So...
You asked several questions.
Oh, no, I only asked one question. White reporter in the house.
So, you know what? That's not, that's not appropriate, sir. If you look around you, if you look around you, sir, you're surrounded by white reporters. So I really ask you to...
Do you feel responsible?
Let me, let me answer the question that you've already asked. So I don't know where you're from, but I know, I know, I know what, I know what magazine you're from, and I know what your conservative viewpoints are, but on almost every question that you ask, you had the facts wrong. So here's what I will say and answer to about the 15 questions that you just asked. No one thinks that a single act of violence is ever acceptable, least of all me. The hotels are where they are, here in Chicago, as they are across the country, because of economic shutdown related to COVID-19. So that, the premise of your very first question is fundamentally flawed and wrong. And you can have your opinion on it, but I got the facts. And what we're here to celebrate is the reopening of our city, the great enthusiasm that our residents and our tourists have. If you look at the actual facts, sir, what you're going to find is that on our weekends, when people are engaging leisure travel, our hotels are seeing unprecedented levels of occupancy, in some instances, higher than pre-pandemic. I think that speaks to the nature of our city and the value that people place in being here in the city. Another data point that maybe you're not aware of, but I will share with you. Over the course of this pandemic, we've had 32-plus relocations of corporate businesses to the city of Chicago, businesses that could have relocated anywhere but chose Chicago. Why? Because we have a great economy, we have a diversity of our economy, we have a great workforce, and they're happy to be here because of the values that they find in the city of Chicago. So then the premise of your question, which is it's chaos everywhere, and the fact of the matter is, sir, which you also didn't point out, but I will, so we get this straight, is that we're actually seeing a decline in homicides and shootings. Yes, sir. You, you...
More thousands.
Sir, we are done, Heather.
Here's my question. Here's my follow-up question.
No, 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 no. Let him, let him ask his follow-up question so he doesn't claim that somehow we're being biased and sliding the guy from Newsmax. Please, sir, it's 6:30, going on seven. Ask your follow-up question.
Well, my follow-up question is simply this. Many residents in Chicago feel that you've lost control of the city. Now it appears as though you've lost control of the Chicago City Council. Do you owe an apology to the victims of violent crime, the thousands of unsolved shootings and murders and stabbings and random stampings in the downtown and the south side and the north side and the west side? Do you owe these people any apology?
So once again, sir, I ask you to get your facts right. Crime is not out of control in our city. In fact, crime is on the decline. All of our major indices show the decline in crime, and our homicides and our shootings year over year are down. That's a fact, sir. And you, sir, I was polite and allowed you to spew your rhetoric, which is offensive to me and others, but I'm trying to be polite and professional and answer your question. But if you want to write your own narrative and irrelevant to what I'm going to say and what the facts are, then we'll just move on to the next reporter. Heather Sharon.
Hi, Mayor. So you will not veto the name change of Lake Shore Drive?
I supported the compromise.
Okay.
And I advocated for this compromise.
The portion of the Shy Big Strong ordinance that was carved out today is directly related to Aldermanic prerogative, which you campaigned about. Does that vote today signal the end to your attempts to end Aldermanic prerogative?
And I don't fully agree with your, with your characterization. What this issue is about is cutting red tape and listening to our small businesses who say the fact that it takes months, months to get a sign to open up a business, which is unprecedented anyplace else in the country, doesn't make any sense. And I agree with them. So we're going to keep fighting because it's the right thing to do for our small businesses.
And on behalf of Becky Vee Vee, who had to leave from WBEZ, what's next for the community coalition's proposal on oversight of the Chicago Police Department? Will you encourage Alderman?
You have to ask them. I don't, I don't support that ordinance. I've been very clear about that. I think it's a backdoor attempt to defund the police department by taking control of the policymaking authority. I think there are a number of other issues that the, a number of her flaws with that ordinance, but if you ask me what's next, I'm the wrong person to ask. You need to ask the advocates of that particular ordinance. Yes, sir.
Hi, Mayor. It's Justin Lawrence from Block Club Chicago. So there's been a lot of rancor, a lot of confusion over the last two city council meetings. As you know, they wrote a letter, 22 Alderman, seeking an independent parliamentarian. Do you think that that's needed in the city council?
Look, here's what I will say. In April of 2019, before I was sworn in, and when I was meeting many of the aldermen for the first time, I said then, and I agree now, they need to have their own lawyer. And I actually thought they had done that. So I think they need to have their own lawyer. The Corporation Council is the corporation's council, the corporate entity who looks out for the taxpayers and the residents of the city. The Corporation Council is not the personal lawyer for any individual member of the city council or the body as a whole.
I believe the aldermen also believe that's separate, though, from the meetings themselves, that there needs to be...
I'm sorry?
That there needs to be a parliamentarian during the actual meeting, someone separate from, you know, not what they're calling for, an independent council, but someone separate to kind of...
The parliamentarian under the rules is the Corporation Council or her designee. And that designee for the last 25-plus years has been the same person. So if they want to change that, there's a process by which rules get changed, ordinance is get filed.
Hi, Mayor. Erin Hegarty with the Daily Line, first time in person here. A group of aldermen today introduced a proposal for how they want to see the city spend American Rescue Plan dollars, and now or as soon as possible, I guess. Why do you think it should wait, those disbursements should wait until the fall budget season?
Well, here's, here's the reason why. We had actually a lot of debate about that. There's a couple of reasons. Number one, I think we have to fully understand, really, the pain points of our residents on a range of different issues. This is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us to get our fiscal house in order, which is critically important, but also make sure that we're meeting the needs of our residents. You can't do that by being in a back room and only talking to yourself. What we've been engaged in now for some weeks is a process of inviting various stakeholders to talk to us about what they see, what they'd like to see us do with the, our funding. That process is still ongoing, but I think that's an important thing for us to hear as, for me as mayor, the members of the executive branch and my team, but also for the members of the council. The other thing that's important and why we think in consultation with Chairman Dow of the Budget Committee, that this should be a process that is folded into the budget processes, in thinking about how to spend these funds, we have to know what the fiscal outlook looks like. So to allocate these funds in a vacuum without knowing what our fiscal health is, not only now, but in the out-years, I think would be a mistake. We want to make sure that members of the body are equipped with as much information as they can about the current fiscal realities that we are facing, because that should, in my view, and I think members of the, many members of the city council agree, that should inform their decisions about how to allocate this kind of once-in-a-lifetime pot of money. The other thing I will say is this, it's really important for us to learn the lessons of the past. We have faced economic crises in the city before, most recently in the aftermath of the economic meltdown following the Great Recession in 2008 and 2009. At that time, the city got some funding from the federal government, not nearly the magnitude that we have now, but got some additional funding. That funding was spent without any regard to the fiscal consequences and structural deficit of the city. It was spent in a lot of one-timers. That money was gone in a year. Then what happened after that? What happened after that is the then-mayor proposed the now infamous parking meter deal. The funds from that were spent right away, one-timers, not applied to debt relief, fixing the structural deficit. And then what happened after that? Well, that was now about the time of the start of the most recent mayor, prior to me, his administration, the largest property tax increase in the history of the city. So we need to make sure that we learn the lessons of the past and not repeat the ones that cause more pain to city residents and taxpayers. So I think a thoughtful process where we're engaging with residents, a thoughtful process where we understand the fiscal realities coming down the road augurs for us to take our time and do this as part of the budget process. However, what we propose to do, and Alderman Dow, the Budget Committee Chairman, supports us, is move up the start of our budget process. So it's our expectation that we will be submitting a budget to the city council a month early in September, rather than traditionally what has been done, which is in October.
And on the scooter program that got sent to rules, do you have any thoughts on the permanent scooter program for the city?
Well, look, I am fully in support of providing our residents with carbon-neutral ways to get around the city, right? I need to do more walking, right? People are biking, and some people really love scooters. Scooters are not universally loved, and I think that's part of what happened today. But we've got to give residents options that are carbon-neutral, that are inexpensive, and that get them moving, and I think this scooter proposal will come back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.